We're not here for the next thirty months, whenever you need. They might have chosen to leave. I'm sure they're returning from their tours in a couple of years. We'll make sure you get some of that fringes we don't give you.
Thanks for attending this evening before we start our official meeting. As we do each month, we have an inward reflection or community prayer. And we'd like to take a couple of minutes to recognize two especially recent people. First of all, since we won't be here on Veterans Day, I can recognize any mothers who were with us in our audience. And all five personal mother and fellow trustees and department heads and those mothers. We all think we have the best mother. I know I do, and I know you are. I'm going to say the same thing. So our hats off to mothers for all they do. And my wife, we have five children, and I know that she is the predominant parent. I will easily say that time and time again, she is, as most mothers are, doing all this stuff. So this time I'd like to recognize any mothers who may be with us, thank you for all you do, what you're doing. And also, since we won't be here officially on Veterans Day, we will have a Memorial Day later in the month. If you'd join us at the park or the cemetery, if you'd like to recognize our veterans there in the audience, thank you for your service. And we do have two staff members, a volunteer, Dan Sallis, who was in the Air Force. Thank you, Dan. And to our left, Admiral Janie Friedberg. Thank you, Janie, for your service. I think you had twenty years, am I correct?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Thank you, the relieved gentleman. Do you have veterans in the audience? If you correctly did so, thank you. We have trustees by committee for what you do and you feel well for us, so thank you. Correct? It's time we begin. It's seven o'clock.
At one, I'd like to call the monthly meeting to order. Brookfield County Trustees. Please rise.
Pleasure to lead this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and essence.
Would you like to hear? Okay, roll call, Mrs. Debbett's here, Mr. Ferrer.
Here.
Mr. Suggs. Okay, before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of a few important guidelines to help us maintain a respectful and productive environment. This is a public meeting, and we welcome your presence and participation. We ask that audience members remain quiet while speaking, refrain from interrupting or engaging inside conversations, and avoid any disruptive behavior. If you would like to speak, please wait until you are recognized and keep your comments respectful and topic. Inappropriate language will not be tolerated. Thank you for your cooperation in helping us conduct this meeting in a civil and orderly manner. And as always, this meeting is being recorded for informational purposes. Ready? Yep. I'd like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the minutes for the meetings held in April of 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for the month of April. Second, present.
And roll call, Mr. Suggs.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
And Mr. Debbett. Yes, Mr. Suggs.
Yes.
I'd also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the month of March, since I haven't finished balancing it yet. In the amount of $273,384.26.
I'll make a motion to pay the bill for the month of March in the amount of $273,384.26. Second.
And roll call, Mr. Suggs.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
And Mr. Debbett. Yes, Mr. Suggs.
Yes.
I'd also like to ask the trustees for a motion to accept the financial statements that I gave you this evening.
What was current to me?
As I still have some payments to put in so that I can balance it all, but I wanted to get you what I have so far.
I'll make a motion to accept the financial statements. I'll second that before we vote. Is there anything that concerns them? You said that something's unlisted and a thing that we should be...
No, they're just mostly other things that are made for label record.
Still, nothing, no...
Nothing.
No, almost. Make sure we're, you know, we're abbreviated in advance.
Right.
Make sure we're on the same page, as I know we are, but it doesn't hurt that.
Yes. Roll call, Mrs. Debbett's. Yes, Mr. Suggs.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer.
Yes.
Communications, Concerned Citizen, Reverting Broadway Avenue. That's good. Okay, before we get to public comments on the agenda items, Jan from the Historical Society would like to speak. Can you give her a couple of minutes to speak about what's going on?
Okay, I'm here to represent the Brookfield Historical Society. And recently, we've been growing at some leaps and bounds, as we talked about. And I'm here to encourage some of you folks, as well as some of the members of the trustees, to join the Historical Society. It's just ten bucks a year, and we'd like to have you guys represented with us. That's one thing. And so memberships I have, I gave them each a membership paper, and I have others if any of you are interested. And we have our meetings once a month on the second Thursday of each month at the Breisler Funeral Home. And we have a good meeting coming up Thursday night. And it's, our speaker is David Dye with the Sharon Harren staff, and he'll be speaking about UFOs of 1994 in Brookfield. We have a couple of other things going forward with our agenda, and we're going to put Elizabeth Booze's book in print, which is compiled with all of her stories that she wrote and sent into the vindicator over the years. And we just contacted her recently. She's just turned eighty-nine years old. And she's so excited that we're finally going to get that in print for her. And we're going to get the Tarkanic book reprimanded. That's going forward, but first we've got to get some sponsors and get some... It's going to be a bit of a bigger endeavor. And let's see, what else? So in the summer, we plan to do a Brookfield Center walk, talking about the history of the different homes. And hopefully, we'll be prepared to do a Pan's Corners Cemetery Walk as well. So these are the things we've got going on, and we'd be excited to have more of you and be a part of it. And I think it'd be very good if we had the trustees on board, and so we could all work together and look at each other's agendas and be able to help one another to grow, and have Brookfield, in fact, grow as well, and people become educated about our past, which is important.
Agreed.
Yeah, we just thought it's essential that the history of Brookfield is going to be transmitted down to the next generation. And we have real concerns about that. So we're trying to grow the Historical Society, the love of all of you, you know, to be a part of it. All of you have grown up, for the most part, here in Brookfield. You know the history. You could be speakers. I mean, your ideas would always be welcome. So we're hoping that we would like to have you just please come and join us in this very worthwhile endeavor.
Thank you, Jan.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with public comments on the agenda items only. We're going to do something a little different. We're going to ask you to stand up, and we're going to ask you to state your name. If you'd like to give your address, that's fine. Eventually, we'd like to have you come to the front and get a podium or something, because we are recorded, and there's just magical voices floating in the background. So going forward, please stand or whatever you're comfortable with, but please state your name. So does anybody have any questions on the agenda items only? You will have a chance later in the production to talk about anything. Yes, sir.
What's the agenda?
Can you give a question?
Agenda.
Which is all?
Which is all.
Is there anything on the agenda? Yep.
The car, the car that... I guess, what did you say about Broadway Avenue?
We haven't said anything yet.
Yeah, no, we had a communication with Broadway Avenue. It was an anonymous person. I got, I got something else about it, too. Well, yeah, you can bring that up during the way through the comments.
Okay, everybody okay? All right, we're going to move on to the police report and Chief Mucci.
Yeah, did you have those in your phone?
Yes, it's in there.
Oh, okay. I want to watch this. My microphone's not shut off.
It isn't? Maybe I'll get it. Forgot my sheet, I have a pair of it here. For the month of April, your officers handled 661 calls, wrote eighty-six reports, nine crash reports, and seventy-seven incident reports. They made forty-three arrests, two of them drug-related, one firearm-related, theft, burglary, or E&amp;E-related, six assault domestic violence or protection order arrests, one three resisting or obstructing arrests, and four armed arrests. And issued seventy traffic citations. Twenty-six of those were violent offenses, forty-four were moving-related offenses, and no citations for parking violations. For calls, we had one burglary or E&amp;E report, eleven assault or domestic disturbances, one criminal trespass, one vandalism, one criminal damaging complaint, four theft complaints, two identity theft complaints, one reported sex crime, two threats menacing or telephone harassment complaints, fifteen disturbances, calls for suspicious activity, six calls for shoplifting, twelve calls for suspicious vehicles, and twenty-five traffic or parking-related complaints. Your officers assisted ten disabled motorists, handled five animal complaints, fourteen O-RN drops. They patrol 12,213 miles using 909 gallons of gasoline. There were four hours of rain and seventy-four hours of regular overtime for a total of seventy-eight hours. And it's all for the reports, and I have nothing on the user.
Okay, do you have any comments, Ferrer?
I don't. We're off.
Okay.
I'm sure you can share that.
Thank you, Mr. Debbett. For the month of April, we responded to 189 emergency response units. Of those, 154 were emergency medical, six structure fires, six motor vehicle crashes, five misslanguished fire, excuse me, nine service calls, five reports of wires were trees down, four firearm investigations. We mutilated the townships seventeen times and went out eighteen times, for a total of 189, twenty-seven of those, which went hard through. We had 168.5 hours of overtime. We used 581.4 fuel. Station 51 was closed forty-eight out of possible sixty shifts. And local roofing has completed the approved maintenance and repairs of Firehouse 51 through as of 4/24/25. That's all I have for my report.
I have a question, not on the report, but in general. Sharon Regional, Dave in South Carolina, does that help? Are they fully staffed? Or say anything by going east compared to...
They're fully staffed as far as... There's been a few times that some of the local hospitals have closed down some of their specialties for the day or for a few hours. You know, staffed and not just Sharon, but other hospitals as well. And people are starting to go to Sharon again, but it's not the popular hospital like it was before.
Do you think they're going to get up there, chief, just because of its... they're not familiar with the staff?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. All right, on to the road report. Supervisor Fredberg.
Thank you, Mrs. Debbett. Road report for the month of April, regular hours work. We had 854. We had eight hours overtime in the cemetery and burial, Saturday burial. A total of 862 hours of that. We had twenty. We had ninety in road projects, primarily just to get work on roads preparing for paving. Routine road maintenance. We did more road sweeping. We finished up the sweeping, so all roads... And then did some basic cleaning. Equipment maintenance and repairs. We had some sweeper repairs. One of our sweepers is up at the dealership. We have something in electrical we couldn't figure it out, so we had to send somebody that has a little more tools and skills than we do as far as tracing down electrical problems. So we're hoping to get that back within two weeks. Tree cutting. We had some trees on the column price we cut down. We had actually sat there. Due to the heavy rains, we get a lot of heavy rain. Some of the trees, the roots, the ground is real soggy around the trees. This tree happened to be a little bit rotten on the inside, came down on Sharon Road. I think we got there about 5:30. We had to wait. It was on a power line, so Al Edison was there. And they wouldn't let us cut the line because it was under tension, so we had to wait for Ashland. And then we had cut, it was a pretty good-sized tree, probably, I would say, probably thirty-six to forty-inch diameter. Oak tree, probably was eighty foot.
Wow.
Yeah. So I think we finished up about 11 o'clock there. So, but nobody got hurt, so it means that we can get the power back on pretty quick, certainly. Cemetery, we had 210 hours. We had six burials. If you're familiar with the cemetery section, end is the ground, the grounds, and you call them burial over there. So it's all allotted out. We have blood markers in it. Tabitha is finishing up the book, the section book. So we're going to be opening that section up this month for sales, so... You're looking pretty great, perhaps. There's about six hundred graves here. And no, they're not on sale.
You'll pay ourselves.
That makes sense. Signs, we had six hours of signs. We got a couple of stop and end signs that were run over, replaced. Miscellaneous, stop time, we had twenty hours miscellaneous, twenty hours primarily they're mowing up at the green. Ruin information, we had seven hours. And we're going to be doing some work down the wildwood the end of this week with the county engineers. Safety training, we had four hours of traffic zone, setting up traffic zones. And in park, we had 180 hours. Road department used 69.3 gallons of gasoline, 282.8 gallons of diesel fuel. Cemetery, we had 72.10 gallons of gasoline. And the park used 62.8 gallons of gasoline. That's all I have on the report. Do you have any questions on that?
Are you going to... I'm looking at you. Other items. Are you going to comment on the scrap tire or not?
Yeah, well, yeah, I didn't have to.
Okay, I'll wait till then.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions?
So on the agenda, the road items. So the bids went out for the 2025 paving program. It's a countywide bid, so that means that we're mixed in with all the county projects. The township, sometimes they get, they conglomerate together with the county and the bunch of township. So hopefully, it gets a little better price because the contractors have a little more product, and they make a little more money. So that bid opening is going to be May ninth at the commissioner's office at 11 o'clock. So if anybody wants to attend, then I think, okay. And just so you know, we're going to add the assignment title tonight. We're going to take that 2004 call out. It's going to be more desk. They gave us the best scrap price, so we'll run it up this week sometime.
Thanks.
Good. That's all I have for road items. Cemetery items. We kind of covered that already, like the Memorial Day is 26 to 10 a.m. And open the cemetery section, so that's covered miscellaneous items. And this is for the trustees, so I talked to grill contractors. They have the bid for... On here at the administration building. Intendedly, the week of the 12th, like, May 14th, somewhere in there, but it may be the following week. They've got a job, depending on the weather, they may go earlier, so...
When you get it nailed down, I mean, I'll put it out.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll definitely be earlier than the 19th, but it may be the 14th. So I will tell Tabitha, did you... that was the end of the month, correct?
That was June. Was it in June? I think it's October or the... The drought, the torrent, the torrent of Europe.
Yeah.
I'll check with Tabitha, but I think that was the end of the month, so it was. If they get here and the weather's not screwing us up, they should be gone by then. It shouldn't take any more than a week.
Okay. Should we reduce our hours or close, or do you think we're...
No, I think if you're going to hear, I'll have, just so Aaron knows, we'll park out a vest behind the building. Just have to accommodate, you know, and we'll work around them, so that when they get it, they'll get it, they'll accommodate.
Will you work with them on that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but we have, when they start, then we'll have anybody just park up.
Should we reduce our hours or close, or do you think we're...
No, I think if you're going to hear, I'll have, just so Aaron knows, we'll park out a vest behind the building. Just have to accommodate, you know, and we'll work around them, so that when they get it, they'll get it, they'll accommodate.
Will you work with them on that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, but we have, when they start, then we'll have anybody just park up. That's all I have for the thing. The last thing is the scrap tire. This Saturday, we had a scrap tire drop-off, so... We don't have a final count on the tires. I think there's about five or six hundred, maybe?
Maybe I'll have one in October.
I hope so. Yeah, I'll know. What does it say? Hoping we're going to get them this week. So I'll find... How to drop, drop off. Yeah, okay. But I mean, you don't have any tire locations that you want to do.
Well, I do, but that's still working with government at one. It's well over a hundred, so they need to cover that.
Okay.
I like a couple of comments of mine. I know more from a spin or two, Jan, and the other... I was there for a few hours the other day, two things. One is, we paid your, two of your people to come out, but they stood in the drack and rained all day.
Yeah, that's true.
And I appreciate the fact, and I have residents, too. I think this is a good, we clear a lot of tires in Brookfield. I think we need to be more diligent next year. There was somebody that came right as your guys were getting there and dumped in a pile. I don't know if it was up to a hundred tires. I don't know how many there were there. Two things. One is they dumped them.
They had forty.
Right as DJ was, yes, it was prior to eight, because I got there day and date with it. And two things. One is, that's not designed for a business who's charging people and then dumping their tires. And this is for citizens of Brookfield. This person, I don't know who it was, DJ, I said they had business in Brookfield. That's not what this is intended for, number one. Number two is they dumped them out of a dump truck or whatever. So you guys then had to take those tires. That's somebody that's not... and I know you guys don't want to be that guy, that when somebody comes in with forty tires and say, well, this isn't designed for that. And the argument would be, well, would we rather than be there than be on Addison Road dumped somewhere, you know, somewhere? Yeah, but that's not what it's designed for, and it kind of bothers me, the fact that people take advantage of that.
Yeah, and the biggest reason why we have a lot of commercial businesses, because most times, they're already getting paid for scrap tires. So they charge the customer whoever bought tires. Usually, there's a scrap. You pay that, and then instead of them getting rid of it, paying something to get rid of it, they bring it here for free. And so, yeah, that's not right.
Yeah, and I really appreciate, I mean, you've been out of the past years. It's a, you know, you take a dirty tire that's got water in it, it's poured out rain, you throw it in a pile. It's not a clean job.
There's usually water inside and mud. Oh, I don't know.
I appreciate the effort from you guys. It's more than just them being there. It's the fact that...
Oh, that's another thing I appreciate.
Okay, real quick. So now that the leaves are on the trees are green, it's noticeable to see the lawn and possibly where it's... it's dead. Is that something that we can get a quote on?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have...
Yeah, okay.
So I need to get another.
That what you're talking about today?
Yeah. And then May seventh, we're still good for up in Green.
With the May seventh tonight? I have my phone.
Wednesday.
It's Wednesday, so...
Okay, with the kids in Green, do you have...
Yeah, and...
Gentlemen.
Tell them you're going to...
Is everything out? What?
Take everything out around them, because that's going to be a one-day job for you?
Oh, okay, I can have it two days if I ask. I'll go with it. But the kids are going to do the mulch.
Okay.
And I'm just going to do the rock. If everyone's okay with that.
Okay. Are you going to put it? I'm okay with it. You're putting it out.
I'm okay with it. You go try it.
You're going to go off down the road.
I don't know, you know, if we can. Just because...
Well, you're going to be hard. You have to cut it and slice it around, because we already have the bushes there.
We can put rain down.
You could put cloth, you could put plastic or whatever they use down.
You're running museums over there, aren't you?
Yeah, so the issue was that we were doing, because it's like all the mulch and the dirt, all the water comes off the roof, and then it just, it's just a mess up there.
It's thoroughly much nicer.
The only thing I can think of, and then the mulch, the kids will just go do the mulch around the trees. I'm just not putting it out as far. Is that okay?
I don't know.
Okay.
My personal thoughts are, is I wouldn't even walk around the trees, but...
Well, okay, we'll try that. Anyway, that's happening May seventh, so I'll be up there with that. But that was all. I just want to get on with those trees. That's one Wednesday away from disaster.
That's Wednesday.
Yeah, I'll triple-check.
I'm surprised.
Not just Friday, but...
Yeah.
Okay, but that's it. Any questions for Jan? Kind of have a special guest this evening.
Code Officer Ross is in the house.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. No, I just got Code Officer Ross. He needs to give a report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Debbett. Under my report, I'm just going to kind of go with the newer items here. Some which we may not have thought about. We've got three new permits here. We've got 7897. First Street Roof Replacements. We've got 5843 Warren Sharon, and that's 84 lumber. They're doing some office renovations, so they got their permits from like the county. Then the latest thing, 806 Brookfield Avenue. That's an accessory garage, masonry combination. And that's all right, car sales, LLC, Warren. And that's on the site of the... she was just resting. So we've got also some of the newer complaints. I'm going to backtrack on 1017 Broadway. That's Broadway and Bud. That out of town property owner did clean up the problems there, which was a pretty egregious violation. But now he's got some other issues. The grass is growing, so I'll be in touch with him this week. I believe he lives in Maryland, so it makes it a little bit difficult, but we'll see on that. We've got 563 Open Dumping, which is a problem here. 563 Nelly. I've got the Health Department working with me on that. We've got parking on grass problem, 400 block of wintergreen. 7842 Gnome Street rubbish debris. Keep an eye on that. That's, I think he's, I think he'll be okay. 7552 Warren Sharon, that is, as you're coming down, but all of course, we have problems. We'll consider, this line is considered a pretty, but it's just sort of a lot of stuff outside that I brought with me on that. Our demolitions, we got seven of the nine reports from Trumbull County Abstract, so I'm going to be starting my communication to the owners, some of which may be common, some of which may not, owners may be... But I think they do only still two more reports. I've got an address request. Somebody bought 7314 Warren Sharon Road, a couple of these gentlemen. And they are going to be running Amazon, saying, "Commercial buildings back." They need another address for that, so I addressed it 7314. And I'm coordinating that to the officer's office. Let's see. Then I did get out of the neighborhoods today. I haven't really got too many high grass complaints, but we do have some high grass. But, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult if it keeps raining, but...
Pete, don't come down the neighborhood for transportation. Don't mind that. Mind that, some high grass, and, but, uh, yeah, I notice that some of my yearly offenders are, are out there as far as grass, but we'll give them, yeah, okay, if, if it doesn't stop raining, this is, you know, I can't really expect do too much, but we'll, we'll do our best. That's that, all I have. I have a question for you, on the demolitions. Do we have any window from the land bank, or whoever on the process, how long would it take to get those buildings down, will they be able to done this year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, just an assumption from the communication back and forth with, with Ashley, that it's gonna be, as soon as the weather improves here, some, I'm thinking some.
And one of those is indeed the old line store on the top of
Yes. Right, absolutely, I think.
Okay. Onto the land report. Can you let us see that?
Thank you. Got the thirty-two dollars, hundred fifty-eight miles driven, she has seven and a half hours, she pitched out an hour, she cracked one and a half hours. Just three way, one hour, her total of eleven. We had, uh, we have four drivers, and, um, seems like when the word gets out that we have more drivers, I think more people will, will get in touch with us and say they need, need drives, so. If we were, at one point, we only had two drivers, I think, so this is good enough, I really wanna commend the volunteers for coming out, putting their time into that, it's good service.
Okay, no old business? Okay, this time, we're gonna open the meeting up to public comments, again, please state your name.
Let's help them a second. Old business, nothing, we are getting, moving on with a lighting project on David Lane, Richard Drive. Rich Love is getting signatures for those residents, so hopefully we'll have that within the next couple of weeks, and we'll follow the timeline for the hearings and giving approaches.
No, that's okay. Uh, okay, public comments.
Martin, Martin, that's a command, adjust, that's Kim.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but you should go, go ahead with your question, go ahead.
I live next to that apartment building on
One oh one seven?
Yeah. They, uh, the other people on that side, I understand, correct? I talked to the guy that lives on my side, he told me that there's black mold in that basement. Uh, if there's anything you can, well, that, yeah, that's good to know, I, I, you know, we do run into that a lot, but our, my code really just addresses the exterior property maintenance, uh, we don't really have a housing code per se, like the city of Warren does, with City of Youngstown, but I'll, I'll make a note of that.
Would Health Department be able to do anything with that?
You know, let me, let me run that by you, I, I, I don't mean to be negative, but I don't think he will, but I'll, I'll ask him, I'll be talking to him.
I, I talked to.
Is that vacant?
The other side's vacant.
Okay.
That was all nasty.
But here's the thing, though, he can't get in, the Health Department can't get in, he can't.
Well, the guy that lives on this side, next to my house, they're still there.
Okay.
But he told me they got black mold in it, and he's, this too.
All right, let me, let me run it by you.
But he had told me, if I understood him right, he said he had to go to quarters, because he also got an infection.
Yeah, I understood that both tenants will be infected, maybe he, maybe one is, it's
Because there's, there's supposed to be, there's a maintenance man, I mean, I think the owner lives out of state.
Yes, he does.
But now they threw, threw, threw a package.
Yeah, right, yeah, I know. I should have bought that today, I'll mention that, there's, I think, four or five sitting right in the
Because I cut part of that grass. I'm trying with that, and I cut half of it back.
All right, well, I'm, I'm gonna get him to notice that he's, uh, you know, like I said, there's people, a guy and a lady that live on my side, on his side there. All right, well, thanks, let me know.
Is there any other comments?
Oh, yeah, I guess, uh. Let me, let me spark this up. Right, yes. Service Street, Upper Service.
Okay.
You guys filled that ditch in and whatever. I never complained before, but all that mud washed in my garage. And now, me and the guy that lives in that house, he writes off a twenty-year, uh, one, TJ, I think owns that, his house. We stood
You know, it's across the street.
We stood there. That, and there's the four outlets up, up above on, uh, Service, and then there's two down at the bottom. The one on that, by his house, by the telephone pole, so it's probably about a foot deep from the rain washing it out, it don't go in that, it goes right over top, down Broadway, across the street, and all that water goes in my garage.
And are you on the lower end of Service?
No.
You don't, you're on the Broadway. Yeah, but I mean, you're on the corner of Service and Broadway.
No, the middle house.
No.
Between, uh, Broadway and Service.
Okay. So if I'm going down Service Street from
No, don't do that, oh, you'd have to hang a left.
I hang a left, and hit her up on the
Right, 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 right. The big two-story.
Well, you know, let's do this another way, which address?
Ten twenty-nine.
Ten twenty-nine, Broadway. There's a, the only reason I ask is, if you're coming down Service, the catch basin that's right there in the corner of DJ's car, pretty?
Yeah, then there's
That pipe goes underneath the road.
But it ain't gonna
It ain't working, I know, but it's a county road, and I've told him a couple of times, that pipe's not working, so.
Oh, I thought you guys, but
No, because it goes underneath the county road. We put the catch basin, we did work with the catch basin from Service, and we did pipe on, on both sides here, we did one, and, uh, Steve, is Steve that lives in that house? He's dead now, he's died. Yeah, but anyhow, we put pipe in his, up his yard, and we put pipe on that yard, but that basin, the crossover is not working there, so when the water comes down, it hits that basin, it just floats out, goes across the road.
You could look at it now, it's like three quarters full right now, and then when it rains, it's
You could have the county come with you and take a look at it?
Well, we got a new, we have some guy. Yeah, I mean, I'll call, I'll call, I'm busy today. When we paid, they paid at the same time, so I, I don't think they were too happy about digging up their pipe, so.
Well, they're gone, we get new people.
No, no, we're talking about the county.
Yeah, oh, yeah, new people are placing a county, maybe, I could say, hey, you know, it's not here.
Yeah, I could, I, I'll talk to Steve Williams, yeah, yeah, I'll talk to him.
Because, because all that gravel comes down, I don't think it's going in those upper four catch basins, the water just
We can look at that too.
The water just runs down Service.
But, but if it's, if it's water coming on the, uh, the south side, that's huge, the north side of the road, it, it isn't gonna be much good, because that basin, that crossover is caught at the bottom. The one on the, the south side should be working fine.
Yeah, that one, that one works fine.
Yeah.
But, like I said, it just comes down, comes across before my house, and then runs, I got water and mud and everything in my garage. I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get some tar again, try to build top of the drive.
Well, we'll see, we'll see if we can get something coming, it's, you know, it's, the county picked that a few years ago, so maybe they'll be wanting to cut it and put in pipe.
Well, I had it there before, and then the chatty, get some water, work there, pour out my driver, and I put it back. But now that we're talking about the county, I know a bunch of people live on Bud Street, lower Bud, that's the county road or anything.
Right.
They're cleaning storage out of their basements.
We've approached the county about that, that storm, on a repeated basis.
You know Danny.
Yes.
I've talked, I mean, every time, it's getting worse and worse, he said, now every time it rains.
Well, that storm
Before he's He has, he's the diesel team.
No, no, that's Dave.
That's Dave, but his house is supposed to get
Yeah, it's a rod.
He lives across the street there.
Yeah.
Danny, all that house, from there down, all, all the storage backed up down there.
Yeah, we know that's been a problem, because that whole storm, sort of
Well, they said, well, there's only four inch pipe or six inch pipe or something there.
Yeah, they, they've blown it out a couple of times, and they've cut through it. People, see, originally, when we take, uh, this whole, that road was supposed to be turned over to us, but we, we told them that we wouldn't, well, they could give it to us, we didn't have any choice, but we, we asked them to please fix the storm, before we give it to them.
We don't want to hear that problem.
But that pipe going down should fix it, on that side, on the, on the south side of the road. They've, they've gotten through it, but I just don't, I think there's roots or something, because I think it just grows right there.
The house on the, beyond the north side, it flooded here recently, and the guy called, Trumbull County, surprisingly, they were there within an hour, and they, there's a couple of sort of drains right there. They, they cleaned that, and then they went, they were down at the bottom of the road. And then, I'm not sure what's down bottom of that, or on the other side of the guardrail down there.
Yeah, it's, there is a new engineer now, so maybe we can talk to, uh,
Just try that out, much.
Mr. Faro, it's safe, we can get him down.
You can, anybody else? All right, trustees comments?
Uh, just tomorrow's voting day, from one issue in Brookfield, so. One issue? We're not Yeah, I'd like to, uh, mention something, I got a telephone call this morning, in fact, from somebody on Warren Sharon Road, and I did some investigating, and I don't know if any of you have received anything from Ohio Edison about smart meters.
Yeah.
Okay, so, she asked me to, I hadn't received, when she gave me the numbers, there's a number just on that flyer for the smart meter. So I called Ohio Edison, she had several, uh, questions, so I talked to them today, and, uh, had some information, so I'm gonna go over a little bit to what they, what they told me about it, because some of her questions, they answered, you can also go online, there's a place on that flyer, a lot of you go online, I did that while I was waiting, it was just an hour and a half before they called me back. So anyway, they're in the process of Ohio Edison putting the smart meters in, it's gonna be an all Brookfield township. Uh, started in April this year, and by October of twenty-six, everyone in Brookfield will have a smart meter. Uh, so I asked them, do you have to take, because this woman asked me this, you decline? You're gonna decline the meter. Um, the only thing is, you'll pay twenty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents a month to Ohio Edison if you don't have a meter. You'll have, you'll have to make your own readings and send them in, they'll provide you the information for that, and of course, they're going to properly check to make sure that that's the thing. And I asked if there was any charge to put the smart meter in, no, there's not, and they, I that, um, some of the information this woman asked me, and I heard it, I think it was in Newton Falls, which is different, because they have their own electrical company, so it might not be the same as Ohio Edison. But, uh, well, some people have said that the prices, their, their electric bills went up dramatically after the smart meters were put in, in other places. So I asked her, is there any truth to that? Um, and she said, well, yes and no. Please complain, and she said, well, most people, like my house is, let's say it's twenty years old, I had an original meter, some people have probably older ones, so it's like any piece of equipment, she says, the older it is, the less efficient it is to, um, record your electrical use, you know, you got a little wheel that spins in there. You won't have the wheel that spins, it'll be digits, saying what the numbers are, it'll be a digital readout. But she said on a new meter, it's more efficient, so it may track your use more accurately than an older one would. And I said, well, I just sort of figured, so, so let's say, your bill's a hundred dollars, something like that could be a hundred and twenty-five, is it? She says, no, it won't, won't be that drastic, but what happens is, when the meter goes in, if, if the person monitors it and says, well, my electric bill's a lot higher, they provide a number to call them, and they'll send somebody out, might need to calibrate it or something, calibrate it to where it would work. I asked about, uh, well, what's the drive about putting these in, you know, modernization is one thing, of course, they, they want to make it totally, but it's, it's a workforce, and people comes out and reads your meters, they're not gonna be coming out and reading your meter. Uh, so they're, they're minimizing their, their employees. Uh, they also said that, um, they'll be able to eventually, maybe not initially, I don't know if you've heard, that some places, they have what they call on-peak and off-peak hours. Uh, and, let's say that your off-peak hours are midnight to six in the morning, some people might wash their clothes then, uh, if they have an electric, you know, electric washer dryer, you could use that, because then the rates would be maybe cheaper per kilowatt hour in a certain period of time, and she, she wasn't so specific with that, but, um, they would, of course, work with you on your consumption, and what plan's good for you. Um, I, she said they can request help at any time for the process, because I explained to her that a lot of people in Brookfield are elderly, and that, that can be, um, overwhelming to somebody that's been used to the little spin thing going around, and their electric bill, even if it goes up a little, that, that's difficult, so they said they provide that. They also said, and this is the, I questioned your second, that, let's say that you have a electrical problem in your house. If you lose your power, your car goes out, it's back on, whatever, they can, through that meter, sometimes fix your problem without sending somebody out. And I said to her, well, what happens if you don't pay your bill, can you shut it off from where you're at without sending it? She goes, well, of course we can, but we'd still send somebody. So, that, that kinda concerns me, I don't know, I mean, people in Brookfield have those issues sometimes, where they can't afford their electric bills, and they get threatened with the shut off. I don't know if they'll have that same period of time, and if you don't pay your bill, they just shut you off with, just pushing a button wherever their headquarters is. It's convenient for the consumer, she says, and it's convenient for them, but really, you do have an option not to take it, but you have to pay more money, you, you don't pay anything for the meter, of course, that, nothing for installation. The one thing she said is, um, the only time there would be a charge is if there was damage to the meter. I asked her, like, in a storm, not so much the meter, but the meter head is the responsibility of the homeowner, I think that might be the case now, I'm not sure if the meter head is still. But, uh, there wouldn't be any additional cost for that if it was damaged. Those are the questions I asked her, that I could think of in this, this resident asking about it. Excuse me, it's coming, by, not this October, but following October, but the latest, they're gonna convert it, they said, I said, they're, they're only gonna do certain parts of Brookfield, no, once we come into a city or township, we're gonna do the whole township, whole city, and of course, they have, you know, their electric districts might include buying a Brookfield at the same time, I don't know, but that, they will be in the process of doing that.
Dan, is it, is, since it's more efficient, does that mean sometime your monthly bill might go down?
It could. Yeah, it could, it very, very well could, I mean, that's what they're claiming, yeah, that, and it, and there's some good truth to that, it could be that, uh, it could be a better, uh, they could come up with a better plan of you doing, and, and she said the off-peak, on-peak thing wasn't the reason why they're doing it, because that's what I thought it was all driven by, because uh, and that's, I'll, I'll segue real quick into the other subject, is, um, our electrical irrigation, but we, I went to a meeting where there was, there was one of the state restaurants there, and he talked about the ability in state of Ohio to have electrical power generated, it's been diminished immensely, and, um, it's a, it's a big concern. It was a little bit complicated, we're tied in with a couple of different states with this energy program, we get some of the power from them, and we pass some to them, but, um, a lot of it's based, and, and it was hard for me to comment on AI. AI, the gen, electricity, the need to generate supercomputers and the avenue has increased so much, and, and the ability, there's been several, uh, coal generators shut down in state of Ohio, uh, they have the problem, if you all remember, the why, why, the Speaker of the House in Ohio was in prison for twenty years. They had the problem, if you all remember, the, why, why, the Speaker of the House in Ohio was in prison for twenty years. The nuclear power up in, I think it was Perry, that, they're trying to get that addressed again. But electricity in the next couple of years, it's gonna, it's gonna cost more, and we saw that with electrical aggregation, I don't know if you saw it, I've seen it in the newsletter this month. We, and at the end of June, our, our aggregation program, our contract is over, so we started a new one, and it'll be for only twelve months, went up from point five ninety-seven-five, which is about six cents per kilowatt hour, to nine point one five. We talked to our broker through the, it was, this was since our last meeting, and that rate came down from, it was ten at one point during the month, and it came down to nine one five, and he said, you guys need to jump on that, because it's probably gonna go up again. They're expecting by November, because that's where Trumbull County is, to be anywhere from, anywhere from eleven cents to, I think he said, almost fourteen cents, thirteen cents. And it's part of this, this, the ability to produce electricity in the state makes it difficult. So with that said, is we signed a new contract for twelve months with A P, a state company, if you're in our electrical aggregation already, you won't have to do anything, you'll probably receive the letter, an opt-out letter, that if you don't do anything, it'll be rolled over. You can opt out of our program, a good thing, we got nine point one five, you can look on your own, if you think you could get a better deal, just be careful. You can opt out of our program anytime, at no cost, and then if you want back in, you can opt in at no cost. We made sure that that was part of the program, programs only, the contracts only for twelve months this time, because we don't wanna get stuck in a higher rate if those rates do start to down. But the only thing I caution you is, and I know it's what you do, giving them, getting a telephone call, getting a text, getting into the mail, that this electric company has a great deal for electrical aggregation, sign on with us, it might be five cents per kilowatt hour, just look at all the fine print, and if you want, you can call me, and I'll walk you through it, I've done it for a few residents, a lot of them are variable rates, so they get you in at five cents an hour, but five cents per kilowatt hour for three months, and then it's a variable rate. I never had one, but if you remember back in the day where there's, people might have variable rates in their mortgages, and when things go bad, they take off, and now you're stuck with this maybe twelve cents per kilowatt hour. So be careful with that, same thing with opt-in and opt-outs, they can charge you as much as a hundred dollars to opt in or opt out. So if you get stuck in that variable rate, now you're paying more, and now it's gonna cost you a hundred dollars to get out and get in our program, so. We wanted the ability of the residents to be able to choose their own electrical aggregation if they wanted to. We've done a lot of work on making sure we're getting the best price we can. When I was first struck, I think it was three and a half cents kilowatt hour, and we got that from A P, and it was a three-year we locked in. This last one was, was almost six cents, and we locked it for fifteen months, and we're, we're locked in for a year on this one, but we're trying to get the best rate we can, we're one of only, I think, three townships or municipalities in Trumbull County that have their own electrical aggregation program, and why does Brookfield have it, is because it was put on the ballot probably nine years ago, and the residents voted they want it, so that's why we have it, but we had, we had a better rate than Trumbull County for a while, and then they had a better rate than us, it's all, it, it, it's just like the stock market, it goes up and down on a daily, weekly, monthly basis on rates, so it's very volatile, and it's hard to keep track of, but that's where we are for electrical aggregation, until next June, we're at that stage.
Just real quick, we had, again with the electric, we had noticed, we went through, we kind of noticed some people aren't paying into the street lights. It's almost June, I feel like kind of like they had that in before, beginning of the next session for the taxes. Is that something that I could just call Warren, you guys are good at that, and see what she wants me to do with that list, or do you want me to?
Yeah, I, I can tell you, I would, I would recall it, but the way it works is, township gives a list to them.
Yeah.
All they are is a process, so in, in Dana's instance, there were some people on their, their drive from a mission, they would have to turn that.
Clear.
So that, she's gonna tell you to give them a list of who is or is anonymous, and we'll, we'll do it. That's not all inclusive though, is it?
No.
This is, this is like phase one.
So we could, I can help, we can work, because what's fair for one is fair for the others, I mean, you did a lot of work.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it's, I mean, this could take us a year to go through, because the next section was like, make sure you rest here along there, it's a little bit more densely populated, so I didn't know if it would help to start that process.
I don't think it can.
And all it is, is that I think it took two or three lighting districts, so it's, it's bad.
These people are not currently being charged.
Right. So I would just like to turn that in, so I have, I printed everything out, I have it done, so might as well move that.
So the better, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then Dan, talk of the justice.
Yes, I just, I had attended a date, and what I'd like to do is check this couple areas, I'd like to look at it, but May seventeenth, how does that work for you?
High check and then what?
Yes, I just wanted to throw it out there.
It's way, you missed Saturday.
Yes, we decided Mother's Day, of course, we don't wanna do that.
Sunday.
Mother, Saturday, the, the, Mother's Day, maybe.
So I need to celebrate all weekend?
I think so, the August fourth, but I'd like to add one, I was thinking, I hadn't talked to her yet, so I really want to, Sarah, she had there.
Oh, yeah.
At Warren Road. Then I'd like to go to different areas of township, we're gonna try to get down to Major. Yeah, we can down Major, yeah, I think we might know a way, it's not the cost of the individual center. And, and we, not to go on, but our little library that was vandalized again down in Major. Mr. Ferrer, once again, took the door off, got a plexiglass put back in, a double lamp, this, this is like the third or fourth time it's been set on fire. This is the last chance, but I feel, I put the word out, we put the word out, we got some good media coverage, put the word out that maybe the residents could say, hey, enough, maybe keep their eyes out for it, and I know you saw somebody.
I think.
Yes, you would, so we're, we're hoping to keep that there, I think that's a good thing. When I see people saying on those, like, somebody made a comment, there's not many little libraries out there that have two benches set there, we can set and rebook if you want. I think that's pretty neat, I'd like to see.
Did you have time for that?
For what? Well, we have society, yeah.
It's always ten, twelve.
Yeah, it's ten, twelve, which is, very, gotta take it.
All right, I would like to make a motion.
Second, who's presenting? I'm gonna say that second.